The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger on Tuesday, January 2, 2018, as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Armani.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilman Hocke.
Here.
Councilman Storch is absent. Roll call, Councilman Tolliver, also absent. Roll call, Vice President Millsranton.
President.
Council President McCray.
President.
It's President, we have five members present in the hall.
Can you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for the indication?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, to consider the right of all who stands, one nation, under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 9, 2018? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The mayor has some proclamations that he will present at this time.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. At this time, I will ask my people's staff to read those proclamations and then we will present them to the meeting.
Good evening. The first proclamation is presented to the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield. Whereas on December 11, 2018, the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield will donate their historic building and grounds at 724 Park Avenue, Plainfield, the city of Plainfield. And whereas on July 10, 1889, the Honorable Joe Mail, Plainfield's first mayor, became one of the newly-elected trustees, and the initial services for the congregation were held in the mayor's home on Second Place. And on December 20, 1890, the Honorable Joe Mail made a gift of the land at 724 Park Avenue to build a church for the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield. And whereas on January 13, 1890, the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield held its first annual meeting, and in 1891, the congregation voted to build a stone structure on its current site on Park Avenue. The beautiful stone church was completed in 1892, and former Reverend Hobart Clark christened it the "All Souls Church," explaining that within its doors, "all souls, whatever their belief or want of belief, whatever be their worldly circumstance, or their spiritual need, shall sign a welcome, a refuge, and home." And those words still hold true today, as it is the oldest continuous unitarian congregation in New Jersey, serving the Plainfield community proudly. And whereas the First Unitarian Society's 128th year of history of service to the Plainfield community reflects their commitment to social justice, equality, mental and physical health, the environment, arts, accessibility, and education, causes that embrace and defend the worth and dignity of every person. And whereas in 2017, the First Unitarian Society perceived a critical need in the Plainfield community, the need for a community center, a welcoming home for multicultural events, arts and education projects that would serve all the people. On May 20, 2018, the First Unitarian Society elected to donate their historic building at 724 Park Avenue to the city of Plainfield and to create a legacy of service to their beloved Queen City. And whereas the city of Plainfield, in gratitude and inspired by the First Unitarian Society legacy of vitality and service, will utilize 724 Park Avenue as a beacon of justice and creativity, a home to multi-generational projects and programs that will enhance the quality of life and feed the creative spirit in Plainfield, and therefore be resolved. Mayor Adrian O'Mapp, mayor of the city of Plainfield, would like to acknowledge and accept the generous gift of 724 Park Avenue and extend his heartfelt gratitude to Reverend Amory Alderman and the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield Church for their kindness and confidence. And be further resolved that we have the distinct honor of calling upon our residents and friends to join him in gratitude, honoring and celebrating the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield and their generous gift to the residents of the city of Plainfield on this auspicious occasion.
(Applause).
Who's gonna accept yours?
All of you.
All of you can come forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Come on up.
I think the proclamation says it all, but we are grateful to the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield for this generous gift. And all of the residents, thank you.
So, I'm gonna give this to one of you to hold while we take this photo off of all. So, let's all be in the photo.
So, get the camera to smile.
One, two, three, smile.
Thank you so very much.
So, I'd like to ask Ms. Vicki Griswold to join me as I read the proclamation. Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Whereas the city of Plainfield is proud to recognize the achievements of Ms. Vicki Griswold and celebrate the contribution she has made to music teachers and the music industry in the Queen City statewide, nationwide, and internationally. And whereas the Plainfield Music Store located on West Second Street was established by Mr. Irving Ridberg in 1951 as one of the leading premier sheet music stores in the area. Sadly, due to Mr. Ridberg's failing health, he sold it to a group of investors, among them Ms. Vicki Griswold, a Plainfield native and classically-trained pianist. And whereas at the time of the purchase, the business and building had been neglected, resulting in substantial damage to the inventory of printed music, and was subsequently moved across the street to 120 North Avenue. Through her love and passion for music, Ms. Vicki Griswold selflessly took on the grand task to restock and expand the store's inventory, attracting customers from all over New Jersey and New York, and ultimately across the nation and worldwide. What had once been a neighborhood music store had now become a booming mail-order business. And although many teachers still preferred to come in and browse her vast collection, and whereas by 2004, the inventory and customer base had grown to over 3,000 and was now computerized, which enabled an even broader outreach and quicker sales. However, by 2010, it became evident that the request for printed music was in decline, and many music stores were shutting down. By 2015, the Plainfield Music Store was the only print music store within a 50-mile radius. Many longtime loyal customers frequently expressed their gratitude for a store where they could actually look for music and even play, play it on its very own aged piano when deciding which sheet music's to purchase. Unfortunately, by 2018, the Plainfield Music Store was no longer able to sustain itself and with much sorrow was forced to close. And whereas Ms. Vicki Griswold is the epitome of a woman of distinction. She received her bachelor and master's of music degree from the Manhattan School of Music. Ms. Griswold is an elegant, active, and versatile pianist who has performed as a soloist, chamber musician, vocal accompanist, and music director for professional musical theater productions. She's a harpsichordist and church organist who has taught piano for over 30 years in her private studio and has adjudicated for many young people's competitions and auditions. She's sponsored by prominent and esteemed organizations such as the New Jersey Symphony, the Summit Symphony, the Livingston Symphony, the Music Educators Association of New Jersey, the Andrew de Grado Foundation, and the New Jersey Music Teachers Association. And whereas, it is a bittersweet moment to say goodbye to a noble institution who has been the epicenter of a vast archive of sheet music for many publishers and a favorite source for Plainfield and regional musical codists. The Plainfield Music Store was one of the finest in the metropolitan area that offered the most collections of piano methods and hard-to-find piano music. Ms. Griswold's expertise, excellent customer service, and love for music and commitment to the store made it a gem for musicians. And therefore, Mayor Adrian O'Mapp, mayor of the city of Plainfield, New Jersey, on this 11th day of December, 2018, do hereby recognize Ms. Vicki Griswold and the Plainfield Music Store for the cultural and economic contributions made in the Queen City, and call upon all in attendance to join us in celebrating the years of dedicated service, integrity, expertise, and courteous service received by all who frequented this impressive establishment. (Applause).
I think everyone will agree that Vicki's contribution to arts and culture in our city has been beyond outstanding. And so, it is for all of the reasons cited in this proclamation that we present this to her this evening. And at this time, I will ask the women of the Women's Art Collective to please come forward as we present this to Vicki. This belongs to you.
Thank you very much, everybody. It was my pleasure to do this, and I accept a proclamation on behalf of my loyal customers, my faithful employees, and my wonderful neighbors on North Avenue. Thank you.
The Plainfield Municipal Council hereby issues this resolution honoring Diane Tolliver for her dedicated service to the Plainfield City Council. Whereas the city of Plainfield takes pride in recognizing those individuals whose commitment and dedication has made a lasting impact on our community and its citizens. And one of those individuals is Diane Tolliver, a dedicated elected official for the city of Plainfield. Whereas Diane Tolliver's stellar career in public service began when she was elected as councilor in the first ward for a four-year term on November 4, 2014, and was officially sworn in on January 5, 2015. And whereas, in addition to serving as councilwoman, Diane Tolliver served as a liaison to the multitude of city boards and commissions, including but not limited to serving on the City and Neighborhood Services Committee, liaison to the Plainfield Public Safety Committee, liaison to the Greenbrook Flood Control Commission, alternate liaison to the Special Improvement District, and alternate liaison to the Shade Tree Commission. And whereas, Diane Tolliver's presence on the city council provided a sense of leadership, human understanding, and truly demonstrated the qualities of a true leader. Ethic and honest, she remained unafraid to make the right decision even when unpopular. Now therefore, be it resolved that this governing body, on behalf of the entire citizenry of this great city, especially to see her thanks to Diane Tolliver, along with the deepest, most sincere wishes for years ahead of great happiness for this great citizen who have and continues to contribute so much to our city. And be it further resolved by this governing body, on behalf of the entire citizenry of this great city, does hereby spread upon its permanent record its most sincere thanks to Diane Tolliver for her selfless years of services and dedication to the city of Plainfield. Signed and sealed, dated December 11, 2018.
I finally did my time back there. I just wanna say thank you to all of the citizens, the administration, council members, everybody that put up with me for four years. I can say I see great improvements in the city since I was on board and since others have joined, all of the things that the mayor and the administration have done. We fought sometime, but we got it done. We see a better Plainfield today, and I see a better tomorrow coming. But don't count me out, I may be back. But I wanna thank the citizens in all the wards, not just the first ward, all the wards. We work collectively together to make our city great, and we're gonna make it even greater. Thank you for this, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just a reminder that the reorganization meeting will be scheduled for Monday, January 7, 2019, at 7:00 PM here at the Municipal Courthouse Council Chamber. Consideration of public hearings, second reading, and final passage. Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-27 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-27 is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Court of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971. Salary amendments hereby certified. Notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See, and I have a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. So.
Second.
All in favor? May I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2010-27, Councilmember Armani.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman Hocke.
Aye.
Councilman Storch.
No.
Councilman Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. Six in favor, one opposed. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-28 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-28 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and County Union adopting a redevelopment plan for the South Avenue East redevelopment area. It's hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See, and I have a motion to close. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final?
Yeah, I'll agree to you. Get a second.
On final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. So.
Wait. You move her a second.
Second.
Yes, I wanna comment on this ordinance. Plainfield hasn't been more business-friendly, and we're attracting more developers than any time in the city's recent history. This is a positive reflection on the work of city government, especially in the last five years. Have we reached the point where Plainfield doesn't have to accept every developer, every development proposal, and all requests for tax evasion? I believe that time has come for Plainfield. We've positioned the city with more negotiating leverage to have our developers give our residents what they want. In other words, development that is not just for the sake of development. Ordinance 2018-28 is before the council for approval. I urge my colleagues to reconsider this. It permits the use of retail convenience with fuel services. We have existing retail convenience at the corners of South Antero and South Harbor. Why would we want to add more of the same when for many years, all Plainfield stakeholders have expressed a desire for the South Avenue Commercial Corridor to increase the variety of shopping experiences for residents and visitors? Why would we permit fuel services in a transit-oriented redevelopment area? Strangely enough, a bank without drive-through facility is a permitted use. It's contradictory. There's much good in this proposal, and we can correct this major flaw by voting not to approve it and sending it back to the planning board. City Council has that power and should use it.
Do you make a motion?
No. That's all?
May I have a roll call?
Roll call on MC 2018-28, Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman Hocke.
Yes.
Councilman Storch.
No.
Councilman Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. Six in favor, opposed. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-29 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-29 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and County Union adopting amendments to the TODD West redevelopment plans. Hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See, and I have a motion to close. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. So.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on MC 2018-29, Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Hocke.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. It's all in favor, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-30 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-30 is an ordinance accepting the donation property from the First Unitarian Society of Plainfield located at 714-720 Park Avenue, Block 713, Lot 3. It's hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Paoli. I am speaking on behalf of the Plainfield Musical Club. Now, I believe you all will agree that the arts encompasses music, and we have indeed made use of the Unitarian Church on three occasions. One reason being that it was an intimate setting for our club and the kind of music we present. And secondly, it had a fine Steinway grand piano. That piano has been sold and removed from the church. And I simply wanna point out to you that if you intend this building to be a home for the arts, it cannot be a home for music without a piano, and more specifically, a grand piano of at least six feet, good quality. That is a necessity, and that's what I would like to say.
See, and no further public comment. May I have a motion to close? So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So. Second.
May I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman Hocke.
Yes.
Councilman Storch.
Yes.
Councilman Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. It's all in favor, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please.
Thank you. Thank you for taking our due.
Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-31 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-31 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9, Licenses, Permits, and Regulated Activities, Article 15, Vehicles for Transportation of Passengers, Part II, Taxi-Cap Licenses. It's hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See, and I may I have a motion to close public comment? So.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Motion. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on MC 2018-31, Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Hocke.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. And herein this, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read MC 2018-32 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2018-32 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9, Licenses, Permits, and Regulated Activities, Article 9, Public Entertainment/Public Affairs, Section 7, License Fees and Excesses. It's hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See, and I may I have a motion to close public comment?
That's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. So.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on MC 2018-32, Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman Hocke.
Yes.
Councilman Storch.
Yes.
Councilman Tolliver.
Yes.
Vice President Millsranton.
Yes.
Council President McCray. Yes. And herein this, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read Bond 1266 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
Bond Ordinance Number 1266 is a bond ordinance amending Bond Ordinance Number 1260, finally adopted by the city council, the city of Plainfield. adopted by the City Council of the City of Plainfield, the County of Union, State of New Jersey on April 11, 2016, entitled "Bond Ordinance Providing for Various 2016 Capital Adquisitions and Improvements by and in the City of Plainfield or the County of Union, State of New Jersey and Appropriating $2,333,500 Therefore and Authorizing the Issuance of $2,216,725 Bonds or Notes, the City to Finance Part of the Costs Above, to amend the Description referred to in Section 3i, therein to reallocate $7,000 capital funds and to apply them to a sanitary sewer extension project on Oakwood Place. It's hereby certified, a notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in current use on November 26, 2018.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. See you none, may I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. So.
Move. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call on Bond Ordinance 1266, council members on line?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Hocke?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Council President McCray?
Yes.
All in favor? This ordinance has been adopted.
A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this meeting. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be here in three minutes. The floor is now open. See you none, may I have a motion to close public comments? No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any extension?
Council President, the consent agenda items have been identified as the resolutions R360-18, R366-18, R379-18, and R3E2-18, and R3E1-18.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move. Second.
Any roll call, please?
Roll call on the consent agenda items, council members on line?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman Hocke?
Yes.
Councilman Storch?
Yes.
Councilman Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Council President McCray?
Yes.
All in favor? The consent agenda items have been approved.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read the remaining resolutions?
We have Resolution R361-18 authorizing approval to execute an agreement with Trenetos Regional Medical Center.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions, any opposed?
Resolution R362 authorizing settlement in the matter of Harry Burnett versus the City of Plainfield.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Resolution R363-18 authorizing settlement in the matter of Omar Cordero versus the City of Plainfield.
May I have a motion to approve?
Move.
May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Resolution R364-18 authorizing settlement in the matter of Anthony Ross versus the City of Plainfield.
May I have a motion to approve? So. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Resolution R365-18 authorizing settlement in the matter of Lamar Gray versus the City of Plainfield.
May I have a motion to approve? So.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Resolution R3E-12 authorizing the planning board to reexamine the TODN North redevelopment plan.
May I have a motion to approve?
Settle it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Resolution R3E1-12 authorizing the planning board to reexamine the TODN South redevelopment plan.
May I have a motion to approve? So. May I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. Floor is now open.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. John E. Pritchard, 42723 Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, now 42x24 West Holly Street, Cranford, New Jersey. Two things I'd like to say. We have our sons and daughters serving our country in the armed services. The sons of Plainfield, the daughters of Plainfield are serving our country, defending our freedom. We must back them up in every way. We failed to do so during the war in Vietnam, during which sixteen of our sons were lost fighting for our country. Those who survived in return were spat upon and called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. The poor brave soldiers that are despised, nor accounted as a stranger. Remember, he's his country's stay in day and hour danger. And secondly, we need to reactivate the hospital in Plainfield. We need to reactivate Milenburg, and we need to reactivate it soon. The sooner that's done, the better off we would be because it's a national security issue. One more line law attack occurs, we'll leave that hospital very, very badly. The sooner we actuate Milenburg, the better off we all would be. Is that all clear?
Yes.
I live at 1141 Stillford Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. And I wanted to thank the city for recognizing the contributions of the music store and realize how much the arts can contribute to not only the cultural life of Plainfield, but our economic life. And we would like to see the development programs of the city to include arts-related economic development. I think it's evident through some of our neighbors that communities such as Plainfield can really benefit and earn more recognition culturally as well as economically. So to continue to support the arts, I was really pleased to see that we made the decision to purchase the Unitarian Church, which I understand is supposed to be a facility that will support arts-related activities, and also to give recognition to Vicki Rizwal for her contributions to the cultural art life here in Plainfield. Thank you.
If I may follow up on my previous comments, I did not mean to suggest that a vote of no was in order. But what I wanted to bring to your attention was the fact that there is a real need. If this is to encompass music as one of the arts, there is a need to, as the thing, as the situation now stands, purchase a piano for the sanctuary of the church. And I would implore the council to take this matter up and discuss it. We're not talking about a huge outlay of funds for such a piano, but it would have to be a grand, and it would have to be of quality, adequate quality, that there are people who could judge that in the city. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I also would like to make clear that the Plainfield Musical Club held its scholarship concerts in the Unitarian Church, and that we award scholarships to seniors who are planning to go into music as a career, either as performers or as teachers, musical therapists, et cetera. We have fortunately, or had been given, a sum of money by Mrs. Del DeLeo when she died, unfortunately, in the late eighties. And we have been able to enhance that, but we want to give as much as we can, considering the cost of education today. So please consider that we do offer scholarships to worthy students. We're going to pursue music, and that we find the Unitarian Church to be the best venue for that purpose, but we cannot carry through with it without a grand piano. Thank you very much.
Timothy Creano, Martina, living in Plainfield. I sent you all an email, no response. Again, no one wants to support Ducrey. This administration speaks of the arts, but no one is supporting the oldest art school in New Jersey. Again, we ask the same question, why doesn't anybody from the council, elected officials, reach out? It's a simple process. We're doing our best to keep this alive, keeping the programs going, being community-oriented, bringing in everyone we can to be part of it, but we hear nothing from the city time and time. And again, Carl, you can call what you want to call, but I'm asking for elected officials because you're appointed, these are the people who are elected to assist the school. We had over four hundred people in this building for the Plainfield Symphony, house opens, and not a single politician. We had free holders there, the County of Union supports us, but not a single elected official. So if you're going to talk out of one side of your mouth that you're for the arts, then talk out of both sides that you're supporting the arts. Thank you.
Nancy P. Willam, 29th Avenue, Atlantic Avenue. I want to congratulate Ms. Vicki also. She's also on the board of the Historical Society, and when you talk about the arts, don't forget about heritage and history because it goes hand in hand. I have a question, and I don't expect the city council or the administration to know the answer at this meeting, but recently I've noticed contractors going around to all the telephone poles and digging around them and putting something, I don't know what they're doing, but it would be nice if somebody could find out and let us know what they're doing around the telephone poles. They're not PSC&amp;G workers, I think they're contracted workers. I've seen them like at night, they've done some poles on Front Street, I've seen them around town. I was just wondering why they're digging around. Perhaps they're trying to prevent the poles from disintegrating at the ground level, I don't know, but maybe the city could look into it and get the citizens to know what's going on, because they always tell you, if you see something, say something. Well, I wasn't sure whether I should call, whether somebody was doing something illegal or what, but they do have hard hats and they do have protective vests on, so they appear to be utility workers of some sort, but it would be nice if we could get an answer to the question. The other thing I want the city to take a look at, and I'm not sure I have an opinion about it, but I read an article in today's paper that down in Trenton, they're passing, maybe passing a bill with the Attorney General up here before the state legislature, concerned about police shootings, and that they're trying to get the state Attorney General's office to investigate any police shootings and take it out of the control of the county. Now, I'm not sure if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but I would hope that the administration would take a look at that, because I know that there are some people that protested it, I think the PBA did. But I'm concerned because we're giving a level of control away from our county prosecutors, and not that I'm fans of everybody, but we need to take a look at it, make sure it's the best thing for the municipality, the local people, the local police departments, and I hate to see the control being given down to the state because they're way down in Trenton, they don't really care about the people of Normandy. Thank you very much.
Normie G. Mohammed, 33 Westwood Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just want to thank my councilwoman, Diane Tolliver, for her four years of service. During her four-year tenure as being a councilwoman for the First Ward, she has been very hands-on as far as working with, communicating with her constituents. I say you would be greatly missed not only by me, by other residents in the First Ward, Councilwoman Diane Tolliver. On behalf of many neighbors, residents, constituents in the First Ward, I says, thank you very much for your four years of service. You are greatly appreciated, and sincerely, I say to you, thank you for all that you did to help me personally in regards to my community activism. Thank you, Councilman Tolliver.
Council President, Ms. P. I can answer her question. I saw them digging around the telephone poles today, and I asked him, what were they doing? And he said it was public service, they're digging to see the well-being of the poles, if there's anything that's rotting, how fast they're going down into the ground. So that's work on public service. We have to check them all throughout the town, so I did ask.
Thank you.
See you no further public comment, may I have a motion to close?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? May I have a motion to adjourn? So.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you no further public comment, may I have a motion to close?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? May I have a motion to adjourn? So.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.